Somebody that we all know and love, Mr. Jake Whittenburg. Jake is the anchor of King Five Morning alongside co-anchor Mimi Jung. He has covered stories from Seattle to Cuba and back, and from eastern Washington to Pearl Harbor and several cities in between. Jake is also a proud Woodinville resident. Jake is a trailblazer in Seattle by pioneering digital coverage and YouTube content. When not at the anchor desk, he's storytelling on air and online. Jake has won 12 regional Emmy Awards, Associated Press Broadcaster of the Year, and several other writing and reporting accolades, as well as been part of a team that has won an Edward R. Earl Award. When Jake is not covering the news, he MCs community events, like this one, and golf tournaments. Jake also loves golfing, fly fishing, spending time with his wife Tara and the two children Lula and Ollie. Please join me in welcoming today's moderator, Jake Whittenburg.
Thank you, Kimberly. How's everybody doing? Good to see you back here this year. I just realized I'm wearing the same exact thing as I was in that picture. Good to be with you again this year. Thank you for having me back. It's just an absolute pleasure to be so involved with all of you in our wonderful community of Woodinville. Such a great time to be here and a great time to be at the line. This crush is happening. All these greats are coming to Woodinville. Tell your friends. It's such a great, it's a major for the valley for just this time of year. We want to start by introducing some of the candidates today. We have three candidates, one from District Two, one from District Four, and one from District Six this afternoon. The format is pretty simple. I'm going to start by inviting the candidates up to introduce themselves. Each candidate will start by providing a one-minute opening statement. I'll then ask the first candidates from Council Position Two to provide a response to a specific question. Then they will have two minutes to respond, and so on and so forth, with all three candidates. And I also was able to find this bell. I just thought that would be a nice touch. When you hear this noise, candidates, your deli sandwich isn't in the window. It just needs to wrap up because your time is up. The lovely Carrie is also going to do our timer this year, everybody. Carrie, ladies and gentlemen. Carrie LaGuardia. We want to start by introducing the candidates for Position Two. David Edwards. His opponent, Chen Kuan Lin, could not make it to the forum today. I want to welcome candidate for Position Four, Mike Millman. His opponent, Shan Evans, also could not make it, also citing a scheduling issue. And I want to welcome Position Six candidate Lawrence Fudge today. His opponent, Al Taylor, also unable to be here. Well, all three candidates, please join me in the front. We're excited to hear from our candidates today. We have four great questions for each of you. We're excited to hear your thoughts on your vision for the future of Woodinville if you are elected. I want to start with our one-minute opening statement. Working from closest to me to the end, let's start with you, Mr. David Edwards. One minute to introduce yourself and give us a quick moment with your platform. Take your white.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is David Edwards, and I'm running for Woodinville City Council Position Number Two. As someone who lives in Woodinville and is a lifelong resident of East King County, I'm running because I want to serve you and work together to make Woodinville a great place to live, work, and play for decades to come. A little background about me. I'm a licensed attorney who has a proven track record of effective public service leadership in both appointed and elected positions. In 2019, I was elected by this community to serve as the Hospital Commissioner for King County Public Hospital District Number Two, also known as Evergreen Health. For the past four years, I've worked together with the hospital staff and leadership to lead our hospital through the COVID-19 pandemic and now the financial recovery. I also serve as the Appointed Planning Commissioner for the Woodinville Planning Commission, where I get to work with city staff to work on important issues that affect us here in our community. I just want to thank you all for taking time out of your busy days to join us here today. It's a pleasure to meet you all.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mr. Edwards' opponent, Mr. Ling, could not join us today. We reached out. He was able to provide a statement. I'll leave that briefly. He says, "The future of Woodinville is being decided now. We need an effective and efficient council working to mitigate our growing pains. While growth will happen, it must design to preserve the charm that makes our city special. Having been living here for over 12 years, my family cherishes the events, lifestyle, and education that Woodinville offers. Serving on the Planning Commission for three years has given me insight into the city's workings, fueling my passion for running for City Council. As an engineer who works collaboratively to figure consensus, I will bring a fresh perspective focusing on key issues like improving traffic, holding developers accountable to our standards, creating a safe and walkable city, and ensuring transparency in government." He wraps up by saying, "I make a data-driven decision and will never prioritize outside interests over Woodinville. I humbly ask for your vote to shape a brighter future for tomorrow for our beloved city." Mr. Mike Millman, let's get a one-minute opening statement from you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Thank you, Chamber. Thank you, Delil. And thank you for everybody attending. This is our one and only candidate forum in Woodinville, so it is important. One of the first things that I tried to work on as a city council member in the last year and a half as your mayor is engagement with the community, engagement with the business community, engagement with our citizens, residents. And this is one way that we do that, where you get to hear what we're all about, what we want to do for Woodinville. So, real quickly, my belief is that alone, we can do little. Together, we can do a lot. And so my efforts have been to engage with the Chamber, with Rotary, with Woodinville Wine Country, with Woodinville Rep. And I see a lot of them here to get a lot of things done for Woodinville. And we're really, really improving Woodinville. And we've made lots of firsts and improvements in Woodinville. We're going to continue that.
Thank you, Mike. Right on time, too. Shan Evans. Mr. Millman's opponent, Shan Evans, was not able to be here today and did not provide a statement. For District Six this afternoon, Mr. Lawrence Fudge is your candidate with us this afternoon. Mr. Fudge, one minute.
Hi, I'm Lawrence Fudge. I am running for City Council Position Number Six. I think the next five years are going to turn into the next 50 years in Woodinville. And as a parent, as a resident, I felt like I would rather be involved in the process than just simply allow it to happen. My family moved here three and a half years ago. We've loved Woodinville. We think this is a beautiful place and that the city is in a good position. It's also postured for the future. And so my step forward to do this was to ensure that the future continues to be bright. Sitting here with all of you as engaged participants to the Chamber, I believe that we can continue to build upon and enhance where we're going. The decisions of growth, they do not have to be conflicted with those prohibitive factors of traffic. We can actually sustain our growth by emphasizing infrastructure. My wife, Kelly, is a teacher. We have a daughter, Emory, who is 12 years old, a son, Levi, who is 10. And we believe Woodinville is going to be a beautiful place to raise our family.
Thank you, Mr. Fudge. Now for the questions this afternoon, as we ask the candidates about their thoughts on the future of Woodinville. And it's, of course, all-important business community. First question's for you, Mr. Edwards. You're running for Council Position Two. And if elected, what can you tell us about your agenda? And how it might specifically help businesses in Woodinville? You have two minutes.
Absolutely. Well, one of the common issues in Woodinville that's going to be unavoidable is the growth here. The GMA requires Woodinville to grow at a certain rate. And in order to do so, we need to be intentional about where we grow and the way we do it. We need to make sure that as we grow, we're able to still create an environment that these businesses can thrive. We need to have the infrastructure in place to support businesses, to allow people to get downtown, to deal with some of the parking issues, to deal with the traffic issues that the city is facing here. We need to work collaboratively by also reaching out to businesses to learn more about their concerns and be here, out here in community, which is why I really thank you for taking the time to allow us to be in your space here today. So I firmly believe to represent the community, you need to be in community. So that means being in community spaces, not only when you haven't asked, but when you want, just in everyday life, to be part of the community, to be able to learn the concerns that everyone's facing. So I would rely on the experts, which are you, to learn about the concerns that these businesses are facing in order for us to come up with collaborative solutions that will help sort of our community, the people who live here, and the businesses that we're all a part of here. In terms of also supporting parks and public spaces, although that might not directly impact the businesses, I think it does. By making Woodinville inviting for people to come to outside of our city, it will help our businesses thrive and continue to thrive and grow as we develop as the city over the upcoming few years. As another candidate mentioned before, these next five years will determine the future of Woodinville. So we need a council that's willing to work together. I believe working together with the council and the other members who serve on the council and community are going to be integral to determine the future of our city here today. So again, thank you for taking the time to speak with me here today. And I look forward to connecting with each and every one of you individually.
Mr. Edwards, thank you. Council Position Four, Mr. Mayor Mike Millman is running for reelection. Question for you, Mr. Millman. In order for businesses to thrive, they need access and visibility. Tell us specifically, what would you do for transportation in our city to help businesses thrive? And how are you going to improve our roads to better handle all the increased traffic?
Thanks, Jake. It's a good question. So as some of the other candidates said, we're experiencing a booming growth in Woodinville. And we're doing that intentionally by concentrating our growth downtown. As the GMA requires that growth, we're doing that to preserve your neighborhoods. And I work really hard to mitigate some of the problems for Woodinville on House Bill 1110. And by concentrating our growth downtown, we've been able to do that. It's exempted Woodinville by a size 25,000 under population. It also exempts Woodinville in areas that are on septic. So we work really hard on that, so we're doing that. But with that growth comes opportunities and problems. And so one of the things that we're working on that we just accomplished is a new bridge. When you come into town off 522 and you come under the Trestle Bridge, that abandoned rail bridge, we just voted on a new bridge that's going to add two lanes to that bottleneck. It's the largest bottleneck, it's the biggest route in to Woodinville. We got a beautiful new bridge that's going to be much more aesthetic. Welcome to Woodinville. We have the opportunity to backlight it with LED lighting. We can do... Breast Cancer Awareness Month is coming up. We can backlight it in pink. Holiday is green and red. We can incorporate some art. We'll certainly be talking to the Woodinville Arts Alliance on doing things along those lines. We're pulling the abandoned rail. We just did a ceremony last Wednesday where Congresswoman Del Bennett came with a $2.5 million check to help pay for this bridge. So far, we have $10 million on a $17 million bridge. We anticipate another five coming. We're adding parking along that section. We're adding other grid roads that have been on our books for years. And those will help relieve traffic, not only coming into town, but also leaving town. So we're working hard. We're adding potential parking to the Hollywood Schoolhouse District. So we're working hard to alleviate the problems in some of the infrastructure.
Didn't think I'd use a digit. Council Position Six. Your candidate today is Mr. Lawrence Fudge. Question for you, Mr. Fudge. What are the unique qualities of the city of Woodinville compared to other areas of King County? And how do you see those qualities continuing with the strong push from King County's planning policies and mandated growth targets? Also, specifically, what ideas do you have to maintain the quality and the character of Woodinville?
Yeah, I think the charm of Woodinville is what drew my family here. It's a unique place where you have a historic, small-town feel with an agricultural periphery around it. But also having an emerging and developing central business district that's vital for our community. I think that both can't coexist, and we need to fight so that they do coexist. There are critical pieces to this, though. As we talked about with the other candidates, infrastructure, parking, accessibility is critical for all of us. If we want businesses to be successful, we have to actually create the opportunity for customers and patients to know the exits and to allow them to access them easily. I think there have been decisions that have been made previously that have prohibited the possibility of growth without intentional planning for that. The solution is not to extend outward. It's to redevelop and continue and enhance downtown so that we can maintain the uniqueness of our neighborhoods. I live in the Leota-Wilmington area. We simply do not have the infrastructure or the capacity for it to be expanded densely in that community. Being on septic, the roadways and so on, actually prohibitive. But our downtown space does have that opportunity. I was asked in a previous setting what my thoughts were on the Schoolhouse project in downtown. While I think architecturally it's beautiful and has limitation, and anybody who goes there and visits the parks or tries to go to a restaurant on Saturday or Sunday experiences that because there was a significant parking reduction below what should have been mandated upon the developers. Now, the trickle-down of that is significant. If we continue to develop and allow plans to happen, it's going to continue to impact outward into the surrounding area and limit business opportunity. This is a beautiful place. And I think we continue to develop and plan for a future that maintains the uniqueness of our community while enhancing the opportunity for growth in a sustainable way.
Thank you, Mr. Fudge. Second round of questions. We'll start with you again, Council Position Number Two candidate, Mr. David Edwards. People who work in Woodinville are often unable to live here in Woodinville because of the cost of living. What is your plan for affordable housing or workforce housing in Woodinville?
Absolutely. Less than 3% of the population who live in Woodinville work in Woodinville. And that's something that we need to change to begin the opportunity for those who work and serve in our community to be allowed the opportunity to live here and raise their family in this community that we all love. I think the first step is the city of Woodinville recently had created a Housing Action Plan, which comes up with amazing ideas to address this housing need. But we need a council who's going to be here in place to work together to implement these recommendations that were made. As some people brought up before, we do need to focus the growth in the downtown area, not just in the infrastructure, that physical infrastructure is in place, but the resources are available. If we create more rural housing, we want to place that around access to transportation, access to services, all those sorts of access to different things that people would need. By placing that in our downtown area, I think that's what we need to move forward with and continue to build on the success that our council has previously done. We added affordable housing for the first time in forever here in Woodinville because of our council. And we need to continue that. We can't stop what's been happening where we continue to meet the need of... in order to meet the needs of our population. Woodinville is going to grow at a rapid rate. We all love this city. So let's create a city that allows people the opportunity to live here and start a family here. Friends who are my age right now aren't able to live in cities like Woodinville, even though they'd love to be part of our community. The opportunities aren't there. But if we're intentional about creating more rural housing in the downtown area, we'll still be able to protect our neighborhoods that we love here in Woodinville that are outside the downtown area by keeping the zoning as the way it is there and focusing our growth in the downtown area to meet that need.
Thank you, sir. Next question for you, Mr. Millman. Woodinville's become a very regional destination in a lot of ways. Of course, that's good for business. How would you or would you not make tourism a priority if reelected? Please be specific.
Good question. Absolutely. We are a tourist town. And the wine tasting business is flourishing here. We need to support that. We get a large percentage of our operating income from sales taxes. And that's supported by all the businesses here. With that, we're able to operate the city without raising property taxes by residents. So the citizens of Woodinville, the residents of Woodinville owe the business community a big thanks. And the city of Woodinville needs to support that. I talked about the bridge. So coming to Woodinville, I've lived here since 1992. And we've had, my wife and I have had lots of people come wine tasting with us and some other things. And when they come into town, they comment on the Trestle Bridge, the 76th Station, and some of the other old strip malls that permeate our downtown. And it's not a very good welcome mat to Woodinville. So by allowing people to efficiently come into downtown, efficiently park, and have a good experience, that's going to enhance tourism. I was speaking to Adam Acapora of Woodinville Wine Country last night. We've been working with Adam about bringing other tourism opportunities. The cruising industry is an obvious target, where we can have pre- and post-cruises here. We need the hotels to support that. We need the infrastructure to support that. So I'm very much in favor of supporting your business. I was a small business owner for several years. And I know some of the struggles that you have. And we want to support that because you guys do a great job and make Woodinville what's special.
Thank you, Mr. Millman. Mr. Fudge, a question for you. You touched on this in your previous question, but we're talking about infrastructure growth and issues as the city grows. When looking at the city's CIP, what projects do you see as a priority to help with the parking, the transportation, and the infrastructure needs specifically?
Well, I think we see, every time we drive down 175th, you see progress coming. And some of that has been determined how that will look. Others are still in process. I think that the project that's ahead on the Malbec property is a critical decision for the future. If we can... If that project has limited accessibility, parking, accessible roads, and so on, then we're going to be limited. I'm a believer in growth. But it has to be done systemically with appropriate thought on parking accessibility and so on. That road is a bottleneck right now that it's going to be difficult to lighten. But the addition of roadways that will cross through will provide that accessibility. With that also, we currently in Woodinville have very, very limited transportation in and out of town. There is limited busing, other transportation options. And in addition to that, I think that the opportunity for hotels and other lodging options in the future that will keep tourism local rather than driving in and out to go to hotels. I've had friends who visited from out of town. They go to Bellevue or Redmond to stay in a hotel because there's limited options here. With that, though, will come opportunities to actually give a reason to keep. I've had conversations with our arts community about the value of adding other opportunities for people to stay all weekend rather than just wine. I enjoy wine as much as anybody else. But if I'm coming for the weekend, I'll look forward to doing something on a Friday or a Saturday night that will keep them. All of that will alleviate the strain of the experience, especially on Saturday and Sunday as traffic is slowing through town, and enhance the overall livability of our community.
Thank you, Mr. Fudge. A third round of questions. We'll start with you again, Mr. David Edwards. We were talking earlier about this incredible business community here in the city of Woodinville. But there's also room for growth, as we've talked about. How will you attract new businesses to Woodinville? What's your strategy?
I think there's a few aspects to this. Again, we need to focus on making sure we have opportunities for people to move into our city, to build up, to continue with the growth in our specific downtown areas to help support our businesses and create an opportunity for people to live in our city. But also, the infrastructure and just visibility is important here for businesses. There's so many new businesses coming up here in Woodinville. But we need to make sure that our community is able to see them and enjoy all the great resources that are available to them. Again, I think it really comes down to learning from what... From you all, again. What has worked for you all? What has drawn you to Woodinville? In order to increase that and the areas that we can improve, I think the city council needs to take active steps in improving that. But again, it's learning from the experts, learning from you all who have done it, who have learned, who have experienced what the issues that are... that come with growth, as well as the benefits that come with growth. I believe we also need to be more regional. Woodinville, for a long time, has done a lot of things on its own, which is great. It's preserved our charm. But we also need to build partnerships on a regional level to work together with our neighboring cities to be able to work together to come to outcomes we wouldn't be able to do on our own. I'm big on collaboration, whether it's collaboration with community, collaboration with other council members, or collaborations with our neighbors. It's all about working together, finding solutions to benefit our unique community. I'm all about learning from other communities of what they've done and best practices. I firmly believe best practice is our way to go. But as brought up before, we are unique here. Woodinville has such a unique culture that we need to work together as a community to come up with those actions that can benefit us as a community as a whole by working together.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. A second... Sorry, a third question for you, Mr. Millman. How does the city of Woodinville develop a sustainable budget?
That's a good question. I touched on that a little bit earlier. We just had a budget review. And Woodinville is an amazing financial hell. We have close to $65 million in the bank. We have a tremendous amount of money coming in through our sales tax. That is thanks to businesses, most of you here. And that needs to be sustained because that allows us to do, operate the city in the way that we're doing. The city actually staff gets a shout-out on this because we have a staff of 50 people. And we are... They are... They are crushing it. They are doing a lot for that size of a staff. And we ask a lot for them. But what we're getting is tremendous quality growth and infrastructure and stuff that's been on the books for a long time. We're actually achieving that. And through their work in obtaining grants and different revenue sources, we're able to do a lot of things. Some of the stuff here, working with the Chamber and Woodinville Wine Country and Woodinville Rep, we're able to push forward a permanent stage in Willmont Park to replace the stage that has to come up and down. So that's going to enhance some of our business... Or the enjoyment of people using not only residents, but people visiting Woodinville. We're going to have more concerts. We're going to have more art shows. We're going to have plays in the park. And eventually, we're going to have a kayak paddleboard boat launch and other opportunities that we're going to add. So that adds to all the experience of everybody coming into Woodinville. And we're going to enhance your opportunities around that tourism and bringing people into town. That keeps our budget healthy. We continue to do that. We're operating in a very sustainable way, but we're accomplishing a lot. And we're going to continue that.
Thank you, Mr. Millman.
Mr. F...
Is it Aiden? Mr. Fudge, there are a lot of cultures represented in Woodinville, and especially in King County. Do you consider social justice a local Woodinville issue? How do you plan to advance equity and inclusion here in the city?
Yeah. For 14 years, I was a pastor at perhaps the most diverse church in America, where the makeup of our community represented 75 nationalities, people from all different types of backgrounds. To be totally honest with you, Woodinville's the whitest place I've ever lived. I think that social justice is, of course, something we must strive for. As a city, our objective has to be to create a space that every person, regardless of their worldview on how they choose to live, can pursue that with the freedom that every American citizen's entitled to. That's our responsibility as a city. I think that environmentally, ultimately, this is a matter of heart. Policy is really difficult to enact that will change a person's heart, but what we can do is ensure that every person has the right to live the life as they see fit. I think that is the responsibility of government. It is not to impose itself upon people, but to create the freedoms for everybody to live the way they choose to live. It is an interesting time right now. Woodinville is changing. It is diversifying right now. My neighbors are immigrants who just built new homes next to me. There's a fascination and uniqueness that comes from actually learning and valuing people who see the world differently than you, that come from a place that offers different experiences. And the thing I enjoy in life is actually being in a place where diversity is explored with fascination and intrigue. Not necessarily to agree upon everything. Social justice doesn't have to be to agree upon everything, but it does need to respect the humanity of every person. And that's the way that I've chosen to live. I think I've had years of experience that developed this within me, and I hope that as a community, we can be an increasingly welcoming place for every person.
Thank you, Mr. Fudge. Mr. Edwards, I'd like for you to comment on that if you'd like as well, and also expounding on that if you could be specific. In addition, how do you plan to maintain the quality and the special charm and character of Woodinville if you were elected?
Can you repeat the first question?
The first question had to do with social justice, and if you consider social justice a local issue here in Woodinville, then how would you advance equity and inclusion in the city?
Absolutely. So social justice and equity is an issue not just in Woodinville, but everywhere. I actually have experience working in municipalities, advancing equity and inclusion in city and county entities here in our community. I think when you do that, the way you go about that is bringing people into the decision-making processes. There are so many communities out there who have been not included in decisions that are impacting their communities, and you need to, we need to be able to be intentional about bringing them in, building trust in the process. A big reason a lot of people don't participate in the process is because they don't have trust in it. We need to go out there and build those relationships with communities who have typically been excluded from the decision-making process and allow to share some power in the decision-making process, bringing people in. I think one great step is our courts of commission. It's a great way for people to get involved and be able to make an impact here in our community by being directly involved in the processes that are going to impact them. So I think we need to be more intentional about the communities we go out to. And as I mentioned before, it's not just when you haven't asked. A lot of government entities will vote to a community when they have something they need or vote that they need passed. We need to be there intentionally just to be part of the community and have more of our community included in the processes. So in terms of advancing equity, inclusion, I think it's about being present in bringing people into our processes that are being made. In terms of maintaining the charm, I think one of my fellow candidates has hit it to begin with. Where we grow, we're able to meet our growth mandates by growing downtown, but also keeping the things that we love in Woodinville. For example, I love the farmer's market. You may see me there, maybe now and then volunteering at the open desk. There's so many great things about our community that make it unique, our great businesses, the wide areas, the people. It's what we have to maintain when we make these growth processes going forward. We need to be intentional, and we need to make, when we do make decisions, we need to bring in the community to allow them to have input needed in order to be included in these processes that are being made.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Last question for you, Mr. Millman. Last question for you, Mr. Millman. What is your insight regarding Woodinville's retail theft at our local businesses and crime in general? What more can be done?
That's a good question. It's something that, my background comes from leadership in the fire service. Now, it's not exactly law enforcement, but we work hand-in-hand with our police officers, and there has been a surge since the pandemic, at least, in retail theft. One of the problems, talking to our chief of police, is that on the transit system, there is organized retail theft that comes to Target and other businesses that will come with bags and a shopping list and then take them back and sell them when they get back to, often to Seattle. And I'm sure that's not the only place, but that's the example that I was giving. Working with the chief of police on tamping that down, he has started having patrol emphasis and police officers stationed at Target and some other locations to have visibility so that when people are showing up, that they know, go somewhere else. We're working with King County Metro as we speak. I have a meeting coming up, I can't remember what day, but on being able to work with them on limiting some of that because I want, I want Woodinville to be a very safe place to have a business, a safe place to shop, a safe place to live, a safe place to raise your kids. I enjoyed, I came to Woodinville primarily because of the location, and the school district brought me here in 1992. I raised two kids in the North Shore School District. They had a wonderful experience. They both graduated college and are doing really well. I want other people to have that opportunity. I want your businesses to be able to thrive and not be afraid of, we have, we have businesses right now coming from other areas simply to escape that kind of crime, so we need to preserve that opportunity and protect that.
Thank you, Mr. Millman. And final question for you, Mr. Fudge. As a city council member, sometimes with today's technology, the more connected you are, the more disconnected you can get from the actual people that you're representing. How would you stay connected with your constituents in Woodinville and the business leaders here?
I think it's showing up. I think you have to show up to listen and ultimately to be able to develop a thought to offer other people. I have engaged Woodinville since moving here through showing up, through showing up through opportunities through our schools to volunteer, to coach, to be involved on the Little League Board. You show up and you actually listen to what people have to offer and to take care of their concerns, is to understand what their cares are before you actually offer a solution. It's an interesting dilemma right now. As a parent of a soon-to-be teenage daughter, I see the press toward digitizing all relationships, but there's something that's actually critical about human connection, where you can look into a person's eyes and actually sense what they actually care about. As a city council member, my commitment would be to show up and to work incredibly hard. Work ethic is something I believe, and it's ingrained in me, it's a value in mine. I would not be doing this just to sit up on a, in a room, casting votes, and then going home. This is, tension is not about the position, it's about the engagement. It's about actually participating in the future, and the way you do that is getting to know people like yourselves, to hear your concerns, so we can work together to build a better future for our community, for our families, for every resident of our town. I have grown to have a deep distaste for social media, though I am sucked into the vortex as so many of us are. The thing I look forward to most is sitting down with a pocky and actually sharing those human moments with people to see who they actually are, to listen, and to build that relationship that can move us forward in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Fudge. We've covered a lot of ground here with you, you three candidates this afternoon. I'd like to give you each a one-minute opportunity for a closing statement as we talk to all of these wonderful business owners and leaders in our community. Give one minute.
Absolutely. First, I'd like to thank my fellow candidates for being here today. When it comes, these are public service positions, and when it comes to the public service, the first step is being present. So thank you all for being here today. And we're all here here trying to earn your support, and I thank you all for taking the time to speak with us. My campaign is endorsed by many local leaders, including our state representative, being a doer, three current city council members, and the current mayor of Woodinville. I hope to earn your support during this campaign as well. I'm always willing to reach out, to meet up with you and have any conversations, or please share any concerns that you may have. If you would like to learn more about me, please visit my website at edwardssforwoodinville.com. I'd be happy to answer any questions or any concerns as we get through this campaign season. And again, thank you for taking time out of your busy day to be here and speak with us here today.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mr. Millman, one minute, please.
Thank you. I'll speak quickly. My, I have a passion for service. It's in my DNA. I've lived it. I've spent 32 years now in the Fire EMS service, serving my community. I spent over a decade coaching Little League various sports. I was on my HOA. I was elected as a union leader for my fire department. I was elected vice chair on Woodinville Fire Commission. I was elected to city council prior to that plan, and I was honored to serve as your mayor over the last year and a half. Services is in my DNA, making our community, Woodinville is a wonderful place to live and work, and we want to keep it that way, and nobody will work harder. Working with candidates like, that are sitting up here with me now, groups like Chamber and some of the others I've mentioned, I will work hard for this community, and I would be honored if I had that opportunity again.
Thank you, Mr. Millman. Mr. Fudge, one minute, sir.
Thank you to the Chamber for hosting us and for the invitation, Chair. Of course, we're here to earn your support. I've entered this intentionally looking to be a person who would collaborate and build bridges across different thoughts and different perspectives. I've received the endorsement of Mayor Millman, of Councilmember Arn, of Councilmember Michelle Evans, of Councilmember Lester Obstello, showing that I hope that as a person, I can enter this to actually collaborate with those who are involved in this process. I'm a person who believes, I'm a hopeful person. I'm an optimistic person. I think we live in a beautiful place, but I think that our future will come together and become more bright as we collaborate together. So my commitment to you is to work alongside you, to listen, and to collaborate toward the refinement of ideas that will strengthen us as we create a brighter future.
Thank you, Mr. Fudge. We sure appreciate you three gentlemen showing up here today and being with us. Round of applause for our three candidates today. Our city council number two, number four, and number three. Before I leave you this afternoon, I'd encourage you all to be civically engaged. Don't forget ballots in King County going on August, sorry, October 18th this year. Election Day, of course, November 7th. Thank you for having me back as your moderator. We will, of course, be covering all the races on King Five News. Let's get our fearless leader, Kimberly, back up here again.